Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for giving us another day. Father, I ask you to look over each and every one of us that are sitting in this room today. Father, I ask you to look over the police department and our children that are walking the streets of this town in your name, Saint Amen.
Amen.
We pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
This is what?
Here.
Mr. Chenation is not here. Mr. Brothers?
Here.
Mrs. Short is not here. Mr. Dietrich?
Here.
Mr. Raider is not here. Professor?
Here.
Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mayor Jackson?
Here.
Solicitor Rader?
Here.
Chief Prosecutor?
Here.
If there are any persons in attendance who would like to speak first regarding any concerns or issues?
We're here from the boat club about this contract that we had a draft of and we'd like to see some changes made on it and also we would like to see the rowers association lease and the gas taxes.
Is there anything that you want to see on that lease or compare?
Yeah, we're just curious to see what, you know, it seems like we're the ones that do all the work down there and every time we go to sign a lease it's like a hassle and everything gets changed so we would like to see it changed. Also the insurance that we have to have. The club naming the borough as an additional insurer and shall secure insurance coverage for personal injury, death, damage, destruction, and replacement of the aggregate amount of less, not less than $1 million. We don't want to name the borough on our insurance policy because they always have their own and we always have our own. So we're gonna, we're gonna have, we want the insurance policy, policy to be our insurance policy for $1 million and the borough needs to get their own like they always have. We never have to name them on our insurance policies.
We were supposed to. That was just out of the last agreement. Won't that recognize?
Like if we named you on our insurance policy?
Yeah, supposed to.
We...
I mean, we have our own policy. That's not the issue.
Well, then we don't need to name you, right? You have $1 million and we have $1 million, we should be good.
If protection is for anything that you cause, a problem with naming us additional insurers then it covers us as well under your claim if it's something that you caused. If it's something that's our property, that is our fault, they're gonna come after us and I'll be all responsible.
Well, it is your property because we want it from you.
I understand, but there's things you do down there.
We cover, we cover the dock.
You have, you have a lawnmower, you got gas grill, if somebody runs a lawnmower and kills himself or a grill, that's why we're named additional insurers so they can't come after us for that kind of stuff. That's why. It's a danger.
Let's take that one step further. What if someone who isn't a part of our club goes down there?
When we're not there?
When we're not there, operates a gas grill, the unforeseen happens, the lawnmower, somebody gets a bright idea to trim the bush with a lawnmower because that's all stated on the lawnmower and pointing now, but I mean, that's what we're worried about. That's the whole issue.
The reality is, anybody gets hurt down there, all of us are gonna be drugging that lawsuit. It's just a matter of who's gonna be the primary, you know, person who's gonna have to deal with that case.
What about off-season?
Like the outcome of the state said we have to carry it public, bring it public, but if we're not there, it is gonna be required...
Well, your agreement is year-round, so whether you're there or not, it's based on your lease or the agreement, whichever now. It's always been a year-round agreement lease, so even when you weren't there technically it was a lease.
If the insurance didn't change from the past lease ten years wide, are you all all of a sudden listing it in here and we have to name you on our insurance policy when we never did for the past, what, 20 years or 20 years?
I'm sure it was in the last agreement, if that was in there.
Well, I don't think it's worth it.
Well, I know it probably didn't, if you were supposed to, but that just helped cover us.
You have your own to cover it. So we'd like to see that changed. The sanitation and litter removal, the club is responsible at some expense. We always did pay the garbage and the bureau came around and picked it up. Are you not including that on here? How, how do you think we're gonna get a garbage company to come down here and do our garbage? And you want it to be public? Hopefully picks up the public garbage there.
We'll have a container down there somewhere, but...
Do you think they're gonna go to turn and put it in there?
Well, that'll be up to you.
That's, that was the problem before. They used to have a big container and everybody would just dump all their stuff, it wasn't matter, no, we didn't have room, and then you have the rats and everything else.
She's, she's meaning the public would drive down there and dump their stuff in the dumpster. Not just us.
Who, who took the garbage last year?
Yeah, rat to the burrow.
Now, that stopped?
Well, the contract.
Okay, so that...
Yeah, we were gonna stop that.
Why?
They still have to come down to all the other pavilions that are down there at the end.
If there's just a container or so, our guys would just go down. Right now we have the contract company comes down, so...
When did that contract stop with that company?
Well, no, we don't want anyone picking up, everybody's trash. Supposed to be just a container there, if somebody's walking, has a bottle they want to throw in there, we're not there to be picking up people.
Well, that's the problem. The public comes down there and throws, our garbage can sits up there by our port-a-potty. They come down and throw their stuff in there, there's not a garbage bag in there, it's for us to put our garbage stuff in there. They come in and then we have more garbage than we really do.
We do a lot of cleanup down there as well, it's just definitely, I mean, I, I know that we do well before and after where the club is picking up garbage and pot bottles and just all kinds of crazy things, all up and along down there. So then, I mean, are we gonna have to then truck that back to wherever to dump it or should we start thinking of maybe going in on a dumpster?
If you're bringing that up, if the council wants to consider collecting the garbage, that's fine. These are issues you're bringing before then.
I think it would be a hefty cost if we had to get our own, a hefty cost and, you know, we went off the...
And we're doing all this, keeping up every, all the places down there, your places, the Rochester's places aren't even looking at. I mean, they haven't been looking like for how many years now? And the, and they're cutting the trees, I don't know who's cutting the trees down there, they're just leaving the, the big, big pieces of chunk of wood and then they're gonna come down to our boat docks and cause damage.
We actually had quite a bit of damage last year from big trees and then we come in and cut them off and, you know, took them out of there, but we don't know who cut them down.
Are there other concerns besides the trash collection?
See, the problem that the boat clubs have, they do all the work. They cut the hillside, they cut the grass, that's an expense, the trees. They keep everything trimmed, they pick up the garbage, they keep the pavilions clean, they provide the pavilions with grills and gas bottles to run the grills, and you want us to share it with the public and we, we can't even get nothing for ourselves.
Don't say interrupt. The state is saying that you have to share it with the public.
Okay.
If, if you're going to have an agreement with us, we're not imposing that on you, it's the state.
But shouldn't the landlord have the garbage picked up for us?
And the amendment, excuse me for a minute, the amendments that were made to the prior agreement, okay, were the amendments that the state said we had to implement and John did that accordingly. Now, if I might just make a comment, you've had this agreement for a couple weeks, I believe. It would have been a good idea had you communicated to us some of your concerns so that we could effectively address them. And I'm gonna suggest to council that we do that. You've made a couple of suggestions, we'll take them to heart, let's see if we can revise it, but if we give you the revision, give us the opportunity ahead of time to address those issues so that we can come to some consent agree. Is that agreeable to the court?
Well, I thought, I thought that tonight was the boat club meeting because you usually have your council meetings on Tuesday.
No, it's not.
Why didn't, we didn't know that. You thought it was for us to discuss this.
May I just correct you? Since God created Rochester, the meetings have been on Monday night.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just January, January, February, there's a holiday, January 5th, it's always Tuesday, January, February, because the third Monday is always a holiday, that's why. It gets confusing in the first two actually.
Now, why don't I do this before next, the end of this, at the end of May, all right? Make arrangements with me and I'll sit down with you like you did the last night, let's see if we can pound this out so that it's agreeable to all sides.
I mean, and it's before May because voting season starts May 1st.
All right, well, today is only income tax day. I can make myself available 24/7 whenever you want, okay? We can go at 3:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the morning, in the afternoon, but let's, that's the only way we're gonna get it done, okay? And it's kind of unfair that we try to negotiate an agreement with a lot of people who evidently have some reason to be here.
I understand that.
You know, this council wants to work with you, but on the other hand, we have the third party called the state who absolutely insists on this quote-unquote "public availability" and I know the gripes that you're making because you do take care of it and yet it has to be open to the public and you have their responsibility. I can appreciate that and it makes sense, okay? So if you can call me or we can arrange a date, you wanna do it right now?
Do it right now.
Next Monday.
Next Monday? What time?
26, 6 o'clock on the 22nd?
It's fine with me.
Is that okay with all voters?
How about 6:30?
Mm-hmm. 6:30?
6:30.
Okay, the 22nd of April?
Yeah.
At 6:30.
Yeah, the issue would be...
Right here?
Yes, if you would be kind enough to email me the changes that you would like to make in that proposed agreement, okay?
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who'd like to speak next?
Hi.
Hi.
We have several organizations as well as a bunch of interested parties coming back from Brighton First. As you know, we were here in the March meeting and had talked about our idea of trying to have as a public service project, a children's community garden within the Rochester borough. And our plan is to have a space that doesn't require children in the borough area to be transported, so we wanna look for something central that they could walk to and we have a large number of people that are either seniors or adults who would like to be able to do a program to help children and their parents have a gardening plot and make decisions about, you know, what they would like to grow and learn how to farm and even if it's a basic little container or a plot. And we've had raised beds, we have regular beds, and Brighton First is the 501(c)(3) nonprofit that's been around since like 1998. We had reorganized our charter in 2014 and made it not a friends and family kind of board as we were having more income and made it a general community service board of people that are not connected or related to each other. So since 2014, we've been doing projects in the Beaver County area even before that and so we're the ones that sponsor the NAMI Beaver County building in Beaver, Pennsylvania. And our second project is what we call the Rochester Community Center, which is 132 and 134 Brighton Avenue, and that's like four separate condos that were, and by condos I mean separate, separate projects, I guess, that are in that, each of those buildings, which is each about 55,000 square foot. So we're rolling that out, one of those projects yearly through to 2021. So the Rochester Community Theater, our, our area theater, which is going to be the home of our act and possibly some other Rochester theatrical concerns, is gonna be opening, we hope, in May of 2019. We're pretty close to going and having people look at it for an occupancy, an occupancy project. We also are the people who have the contract and are the fiduciary for the senior gardener program that goes to the Beaver County Commissioners. Previously that had been Penn State and Penn State Extension, I guess, had terminated that contract at the end of 2018 and so the senior gardens have been running up in Brighton Township for probably, I don't know, probably Mike Durham here is our committee member who's doing that, but it's probably 35, 40 years, yeah. And so we have a contract through, money through Office on Aging to take care of the tillings and a lot of the improvements that had been made up there through that time. And so the idea was to try to do something to get back to river communities and so we have the River Town Gardening Project, which we would like to have Rochester for Children's Garden to be our pilot program for that group. We'd come to you in March and talked a little bit about this program, what we wanted to do, and I know that you had had a discussion after we left during your regular, you know, borough business and had come up with this idea of the space, which was, used to be a street, I guess, I can't remember the name of the street, but it's basically in front of the Elks, is it?
Kasut.
Oh, Kasut Street, yeah. So the problem with Kasut is that probably the same reason that you've locked it off as a street is that the angle is so steep that we wouldn't be able to have people with disabilities who are in wheelchairs or walkers or anything like that be able to do it because it would be dangerous, that level of angle, plus it's also heavily wooded on either side and so you would have primarily shade for a lot of the day, which would not be good for garden as well, plus you don't really have, you have the bricks, the paving stones that you've taken out, but we would need to actually have tiers to even level it off and that would be extremely cost prohibitive, plus it's kind of a narrow, small space. So we were wondering if there would be a consideration maybe of trying to give us access, you know, and maybe a lease of like 15 years. We would develop the property, you know, get fencing and take care of benches and make it really nice. We have, possibly we would like to, if there's some space or some way that we could do a mural, do a mural for the community and having an access for all, you know, children in the Rochester borough. Now, you know, any space you would give us would be dependent upon how big it is and we might have to cut off the number of children that, you know, dissipate because, you know, we only have a certain amount of space depending on what you give us. So I, I've had several discussions with Mr. Barrett, who's your borough manager, and I had talked to him about whether or not he was aware of any other possibilities of area that would meet these criteria within the Rochester borough area and of course, residential area would be better really than frankly anything commercial. And I know you had concerns about the places that we had picked out on the, on, on the map that were borough property because you think that might ultimately need to be developed or can be developed. But when I talked to him about this, he also brought up that you have a fairly flat, sun-laden lot at the corner of Ohio and Reno Street, I mean, or, yeah, Ohio and Reno Street, which is right up, you know, I guess, over here, and I guess that you guys have the ownership of that lot. And so we were wondering if the board maybe could work with us a little bit today and just kind of brainstorm about whether or not that would be possible. The problem is that, you know, when we had come in March, we had said that, you know, we thought that really March was like our decision point to be able to do something for this, this 2019 year. If it goes back to longer times and we can't get started with our fundraising to be able to do that, then we probably would, would not be able to do anything if we do find something in Rochester for 2019. So there is sort of a time press for this, which I apologize for. But we would like to do stuff like, you know, if we would get that lot, you know, one thing we would need is just to see if you, if you just could run a, a water line just from the tap just into the grass so that we would have a spigot for water. Senior gardeners in the beginning up in Brighton Township had to carry their own water in and I can tell you it was pretty grisly for a while until they got spigots in. But we would take care of building the raised beds, we would end up doing murals, we'd like to try to do some type of community, get to know the gardens thing where we would maybe have some like donuts or barbecue or, or, you know, something to try to get the general, people in the general area and the kids interested in doing this. And, you know, anybody that would be volunteering through Brighton First has to have clearances and everything else that, and we never have any one member alone with any, anybody that we work with, so there'd be two or three people at any one time, so we have the general kind of safety issues that nonprofits, you know, generally deal with. It's not, it's not limited to anybody, any one group in Rochester would be operational for any, any kid in Rochester assuming that we have space. And so that's a little bit about it. Now, Mike Durham, as is our board member from Brighton First, he's in charge of our gardening committee, he's gonna make a few statements too.
Thank you. Suzanne, I was appointed to the Brighton First Board in January and right now we're, I'm overseeing the, the senior gardens up on Western Avenue. We have 40 gardens, but anyway, we do appreciate the opportunity, you know, to once again present our proposal to establish a children's garden here in Rochester and hopefully in a residential area. The lot at the corner of Reno and Ohio is a prime example of what would meet our expectations. It's flat, it's absolutely perfect and compare that to Kasut, you can't compare them, they're two different, two different examples. But Brighton First will establish a children's garden and will appeal to the neighborhood if we're able to be granted use of this property. First and foremost, it will be a garden that will be managed by Brighton First and maintained by Brighton First. We will talk to those in the neighborhood about our children's garden and explain to them the benefits of the garden as it relates to them, their neighborhood, but especially their children. Just imagine this, the garden is all ready to be opened, it's there, you've given us a property, we've got everything in place. The parents or the other relatives are gonna bring their children regardless of age or disability to the garden. With a few instructions on how the garden will initially be operated, you know, we have the children learn to plant, they learn to water, and they begin to care for their plants. That's how it begins, that, that's the beginning. There's no great big program that we have until we get it started and it started with, for lack of a better term, you know, planting the seed and getting it going. The children learn quite a bit, even at the ages of four, five, six, seven, eight. I can just picture the neighbors bringing their kids down to the garden for 15 or 20 minutes and showing them how to plant seeds and what have you. And I said at the last meeting, what did the kids learn from this? Well, they learned that it's a commitment. They learn to observe and watch their plants grow. They learn, they learn about teamwork, how to work with others or how to work with a team on a, on a garden that they're all responsible for. You know, they learn about responsibility, they learn about life experiences, as simple as the gardens, you know, they plant something, they see it grow and it dies and what do they do? You know, they learn that they have to start all over again, as simple as that is, you know, in a child's eyes, that can be a dramatic thing, it's something that they learn. But they also learn about the joy and the happiness of gardening and that's a, that's a thrill when a kid watches a flower that they planted bloom, where they watch a vegetable plant grow and then they harvest and pick that tomato or that green bean, whatever. Plus they take pride in what they do. So these are all the things that are affiliated with just a simple garden in a neighborhood and that's all it is, it's nothing more than that. So this is how the children's gardens begin to grow and catch on. You know, other programs and activities could be created and added as we see the need. One activity, you know, you could start by taking the kids to a farm or to a dairy or something as a, as an activity. You can, you can do programs for children around poison prevention, pollination, what we, what type of vegetables and flowers to grow, but of course it's all delivered at a child's level. So a seed, I think, needs to be planted here tonight, you know, by each of you, by every one of you. We hope that you'll see the, you know, from this children's garden and see the beauty of its intentions. That's the key, it's intention, just as the children would see the beauty of a flower.
Thank you.
Can we just have a show of hands of everyone that came in who wants to go over or is here about this community garden initiative? Pretty much everybody.
Mr. Barrett, would there be any concerns with my, you know, street plot?
Not that I can think of off the top, off the top of my head, but, you know, we would have to be considerate to the neighborhood, as you know, it is a neighborhood garden. You want to put fencing around, you know, I'm sure, we want to put something that nice that our neighborhood's not gonna be affected.
And we would talk to the neighbors.
My name is Frank Glasswoods, I also was here last night.
From St. Cecilia's?
From St. Cecilia and we have several of us here from there. Last evening I had the opportunity to visit with Stuart and Amanda and Stuart and Amanda live on the corner right across Reno from this lot and when I explained to them who I was and with what groups I was affiliated with and what we were interested in doing, they were really, really excited about it and they did think that their, their other neighbors would be as excited about it too. And I know when you go up that street on other times, you see an awful lot of kids up there, you know, and, and, you know, when I walk, when I drive up there and see all those kids, I think, you know, what a wonderful opportunity for them, so anyway, that's all I had to say. Thank you for your time.
May I just ask a legal question? Do I presume correctly or incorrectly that Brighton First has some type of liability coverage as you conduct this program?
Oh, obviously, yes. I mean, we have, we have liability coverage, we have to, for our contracts, we have liability down at the community center, we have liable issues in our other sites, we also have to carry liability for the county because we get Office on Aging funds and so we have a rider that describes liability coverage for us at, up at the, you know, the Western Avenue Senior Gardens. We also get an extra rider, which is not required by any of these places or organizations or funders, so that if our members are going in their own car and driving for Brighton First Business, so let's say Mike's at the senior gardens and he realizes that, you know, all the spades are broken and he has to go and drive down to Walmart to get some more spades, if he's in an accident at that point, what his insurance wouldn't cover would be covered by our insurance over that. So we have an extra rider for our volunteers. Now, we don't really have, we have of course liability and injury for the sites, but we don't really, you know, the, the extra rider that we have is for our volunteer members as well.
What about the children if in fact they were injured while gardening?
Well, that would be why we would have the insurance rider that we have.
Same thing. The only thing that I would request is that if council sees fit to approve your request that you produce some type of proof or certificate of insurance to join.
Absolutely, we would do the exact same accountability we have with the Beaver County Commission.
Thank you.
Sure, no problem.
It'd just be a matter of term of a lease. It could be five years, ten years, fifteen, twenty, fifty years, whatever you're interested in trying to accomplish.
I mean, I think that the other thing that we would toss out there would be that if you ended up wanting us to, as far as a lease, you know, we would provide the insurance for the site, obviously, but if, and I realize you may have to put this out to bid because it's, you know, for a property, but we would also consider possibly a land contract over a period of years where we would then take that off of your hands and be able to pay you some money to then acquire the, the site and then you wouldn't have to worry about it as far as your liability and everything too. So, either of those ideas, and maybe we could even meet with Attorney Rabbit later on, or we could get something going for nineteen and then think about it, you know, even a possibility of something different if you would want it. If you want this off of your hands, you know, then, you know, we could also consider that as well.
Is this something we can consider and then maybe get the information, the liability insurance, and gather that information before we move forward or?
I think you could make a motion to approve it in concept until all the details have been put together and a lease agreement that everybody is agreeable to.
I think that short term, since you want to get started like yesterday.
Yeah, right.
A lease would probably be to your practical benefit. And it would also be to everyone's benefit just to see how the program works out.
Sure, no, 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 that's fine, but I just.
If it turns out to be great.
Yeah.
Then it may well be in your best interest to purchase the property from Rochester. However you run the risk, if somebody outbids you.
Right.
For that piece of property. So, it's somewhat of a two-edged sword. A lease can protect you, at least short term, but if you decide to buy it, then it might be a competitive project.
No, 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 I understand that, but I just, the only reason I threw that in there was because I sensed that I may just have been wrong. But the liability sounded like that might be a concern. So, if we buy it, then it's not so much a concern for Rochester. So, that's kind of the way I tossed that in there.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Then I'll look for a motion to agree, approve the concept for the children's community garden.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
[laughing].
We need a second.
We need a second from council.
Oh, yeah.
Second.
Well, I second it.
Does anyone second?
I made a motion.
Can someone please second it?
Nobody's seconding?
I guess you're not going to make it though.
Can we do a roll call? Or no, no one seconds it?
You can't take a vote unless you have.
An I can't second it?
Okay.
Solution would just fail for lack of a second.
Okay.
May I ask why? The ones that didn't second, can you explain the reasoning? Just out of curiosity?
I'm just not sure that that's what would be the best thing to do with that piece of property.
So, is it the property or is it the garden?
No, it's not the property.
It's not the garden, it's just the property? Do you have another suggestion for property?
Not at this time.
No?
We have tried to sell that property in the past and no, no one was interested in the last several years. I think it would be the perfect thing for Rochester Borough to have a garden there for children.
Yeah, what's your plan with that property now?
There is no plan, it's just.
There's no plan at all?
Just for the children who can play there during the summer.
How long has it been a vacant lot?
I want to say ten, fifteen years, Mr. How?
Longer than that.
Longer than that?
Longer than that.
As a point of just tossing stuff out here. So, if, because obviously if it dies without a second, I mean, I'm a president of this nonprofit, I've been on national boards, I understand what that means. You don't have votes because if people aren't going to second it, they're not going to vote for it. So, essentially, we don't have anything in your court to be able to pass this motion. What would be, if you were posted for sale, what would be your timeline to post it?
Well, the procedure that you would follow would be this. First of all, council would have to entertain a motion and approve that motion that that particular property be put up for sale and accept bids. That's the way you would start that.
And what would be the timeline for that roughly? Just, just, just getting crazy and throwing stuff out there?
Out of the real spirit of transparency, that would be totally dependent upon the discretion of council.
Okay.
Now, for example, you know, I'm advising you and I'm advising them at the same time. But if in fact council were to say that they approved that this property should be set up for sale and they would be requesting bids, okay, those bids would be due at a certain period of time.
Yeah, that's, I was wondering, is that not time to get bids?
And then, and I really want to be fair to you, that every bid that is received runs the risk of not being accepted.
I understand that. I got that.
Okay, so that maybe I should represent you. This way, I just want you to understand what you would have to do to accomplish your purpose if in fact you entertain this.
No, I mean, I understand that. And I mean, I think that, you know, the council may have some trepidation because, I mean, you don't really know, you know, who we are or what we do. And, you know, I think that we've been really, really good for over twenty years flying under the radar in this county and in the country and overseas with everything that we've done. And so, I realize that, you know, on some level, maybe in a year or two when the community center is open and you know us better, then you might have a different view on letting us rent a small lot that nobody has had any interest in for twenty years. And I realize that that, that may be different for you at that point. But the reality is that, you know, we really want to try to give Rochester first crack at this because we are Rochester citizens now, 132 and 134 Brighton Avenue. And, you know, a lot of times, I think, sometimes short sightedly, and I'm not being critical of you guys, but for whatever reason, you may end up having us then become more diverse and suddenly start doing projects in New Brighton and Midland and some of the other places that have been on our watch list as well. And a little bit of, a little bit of encouragement would, would, would keep us completely within your locale and with your citizens. And so, you know, I mean, I understand that you guys have a right to have trepidation and make your decisions about your property. But I think that some people in our organization, knowing what we do, find this to be puzzling in, in an odd way. And you've got a lot of constituents here. I don't know if that's really kind of what.
Is there a basis agreement?
I'd like to just say one thing, excuse me. Every, every week right now, every Friday, two hundred and ten of your kids, your students in Rochester area school district get a food item put in their backpack every Friday during the school year because of our group that works with Suzanne and Mike. That's our Voice of Justice group out of St. Cecilia Parish. We kick butt and we have things going on now. My wife's working on something at home right now for a fundraiser. To continue to be able to do that in the fall, we've already paid through May for the items. In September, October, November, and December, we're looking at programs now where we can raise money to continue to put that food item in their backpacks for two hundred and ten kids. Wouldn't it be great if they could learn how to grow some of these food items themselves, like Mike said?
And right now, your backpack program only goes K through five. In the second phase of the rollout that we're going to start in May is a community kitchen to have free meals, free dinner every night for people in the community who are hungry. And we have a rollout to expand the backpack program if Rochester schools is interesting, interested to cover the older kids. But again, I mean, and, and you saying no to the community garden isn't going to change any of that. But the reality is that because we have a philosophy of not telling people the works that we do, okay, you don't know us. And, I mean, I would urge you maybe after we all leave, because there's a whole bunch of us and we don't want to put you under any pressure, and, and we all leave, maybe, maybe just think, you know, if there's something that you could agree to that would meet these criteria. You have an idea of what we need now, you have an idea of what we need, you know, within the locale of the borough. And, and think about if there's something that, that you guys want to do. On the other hand, we don't want to foist ourselves on you if, if this isn't right, if this isn't a good fit. And, and, you know, we understand that, but it's just, it's puzzling, I guess, a little bit.
I want to say, say one thing. Suzanne said something about, well, maybe we haven't proven ourselves to you or you haven't seen a result. I'm no longer a master gardener, but for the past ten years, I managed the senior gardens. And now it's under Brighton's First and I'm managing the senior gardens again under Brighton's First. Go up on Western Avenue in Brighton Township, go up towards the magistrate's office and you'll pass it. Ten years ago, there were just gardens there. If you go past it now, we have a twenty-one by twenty-seven shelter. Everybody's got water. All the gardens are fenced in. We've already proven ourselves. I'm here to say that we will do the same thing for the garden here. So, we are a proven, you know, just go up and take a look. I've got forty seniors up there gardening this year, plus Beaver County Rehab Center. So, it's, it's not something that we have to prove, it's already up there and existing. So, we want you to reconsider. You can see the passion that we have here. You can see what these organizations are doing for Rochester. You've had a piece of property for twenty years in the resident that you can't sell, and yet you're hanging on to it. We'd like to do something in our neighborhood. And if we approached those neighbors in the next week or so, I know that every one of them would be enthusiastic about this garden, just as passionate as we are. And we hope you are passionate about it.
Sorry, Keith, I'm just going to say that, you know, Keith Jackson, he said a prayer at the beginning, touched my heart, but it didn't touch everybody's heart here, meaning, let's protect our children. Well, you know, officer, you're an officer here, you protect our kids. One better way is to have adults mentored up with kids, getting them off the street rather than having someone to plug them with, you know, some drugs to sell and to, and to capture that, to capture those kids that otherwise wouldn't be captured. And a simple thing. So, what I'm asking is to have mercy and to rethink this and to revote. That's what I'm asking. And in your heart, if you think like, hey, you know, I'm here for the kids, and you're bobbing your head up and down, but, you know, what, words say a lot, but you know, what action is what drives it. And I'm just, I'm just very emotional right now because I think so much about this garden that it is more than what a garden is. It's really taking, as a community, taking the kids under your wings here. So, we're reaching out to you. We want you to reach out to us, please. Thank you.
My motion is still on the table for the community garden. I think it would be perfect other than seeing people walk their dogs through that lot and not clean up after their, their dogs. It's wonderful for the kids to play, but I can see the kids gardening with their mentors and doing something good and not getting into trouble, giving these kids something to do and letting them see where their food is coming from.
Thank you.
Growing their tomatoes, their peppers, their green beans.
Thank you.
Flowers.
Has there been any interest in purchasing that property in the last twenty years? Has anyone been interested in it or?
Not that I'm aware of. I've been here twenty years. The last six years.
We had it with a real estate market, didn't we, in the years past? No?
We had everything out five plus years ago. We had a lot of properties out and nothing that worked. Either very low bids or nothing much to, so they, our properties sit.
Any chance that some people like, you mentioned, you talked to a couple.
Stuart Millen, yes.
Do a, a survey of some of the people in the neighborhood, see what they would feel like, how they feel about it. That's a, that's a pretty prominent playground for, for the kids in quite a few neighborhoods around the area. If, if the neighbors in that surrounding area have no objection to it, maybe there'd be a change of attitude from the floor.
You were saying, at least from your perspective, your view would be that at least.
What would be anybody else's view?
Yes, would that be sufficient to change other council members' views? A survey? A neighborhood survey?
No, I was going to say something, go ahead, as soon as you get done.
Well, I just wanted to mention that the property now doesn't bring any income to the borough, correct? So, wouldn't it be better financially and for Rochester to at least bring in a lease?
Well, well, I mean, a lease on some level, yes, but we're also a nonprofit, so we don't pay taxes or anything like that. I mean, that's, we're, we're a completely charitable organization. And that's the other thing, you know, there isn't a single person on our Brighton First Committee's boards that gets any money. I mean, we're a completely all volunteer, completely non-paid organization. And, and we have, you know, we've, we've built schools, a school in Dominican Republic, we've built a medical clinic, we've restored churches in, you know, even, not necessarily even of the Roman Catholic denomination, you know, because we obviously have ties to St. Peter and Paul and St. Cecilia, but, you know, different, different religions in different parts of the world. And so, you know, we do operate on a fairly shoestring budget, but we do that because everybody volunteers every single minute of their time. And we have no executive director right now, and the president of the board of directors, and here I am talking to him. So, you know, I mean, or you think about it, but, I mean, and I'm not saying this to, to be inflammatory or all, but in reality, we really want to do this rooftop project because we think it has tremendous community value for any community that is looking to deal with at-risk kids and to bring a sense of community to an area and try to do those kinds of things. And, and what may happen is that Rochester misses, misses the boat and we end up having a very nice community garden in New Brighton or Manac or Midland or somewhere else. I mean, not that we want to do that, that's why we came back the second time. But, I mean, I, I mean, our home right now is in, is in Rochester and we like to keep our program in Rochester.
Would you be able to do the survey of the neighbors and then get that to Mr. Barrett for us to review?
I guess we could. I mean, I mean, with the survey, I mean, how many blocks are you looking at?
If it sway anyone on the board in a different direction, because right now we only have one person motioning, so I don't know.
Is there a second vote? I mean, we can do that now, I mean.
Why not go ahead now? Why can't we vote like we usually do?
Do you want to vote later in the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I mean, if you want, I mean, even if you take a contingent upon looking at our, our survey, or, and we can do a survey, would you like it for like a block or so? A block around that area, all the residential locations and things?
Let me say one thing.
and we like to keep our programming in Rochester.
Would you be able to do the survey of the neighbors and then get that to Mr. Barrett for us to review?
I guess we could. I mean, with the survey, I mean, how many blocks are you looking at?
If it sway anyone on the board in a different direction, because right now, we only have one person motioning, so I don't know.
Is there a second vote? I mean, we can do that now, I mean, have...
Why not go ahead now? Why can't we vote like we usually do?
Do you want to vote later in the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, if you want, I mean, even if you take a contingent upon looking at our survey, or, and we can do a survey, would you like it for like a block or so, a block around that area, all the residential locations and things?
Let me say one thing about surveys. You know, strangers go knocking on doors, and people just get you turned away. Hi, I'm from Brighton First. We're planning a garden. Right away, they're saying, no, I'm not interested. And that way, it goes away. And, you know, sometimes things shouldn't have to depend on people who aren't even here who know absolutely nothing about it. Like Kathy said, you know, these programs are for the children. And I don't know if you have any programs for children right now where you take them in and are concerned about their safety and their future and everything else. That's why we're here. And, you know, that's why I'm hesitant about doing the survey.
I do want to say that when we looked at the other two lots that were off of Pleasant Street, okay, we had done a parking study, because we always do parking studies. So we did a parking study, and it was more than adequate. I mean, Heinz Street itself was, and Pleasant Street's pretty much completely open until you get the lower end of Pleasant Street. And I did, I had somebody come out that those are parking studies and looked at that area, that residential area, and you have more than enough street parking up there. Parking is not the issue. But, I mean, if you want to have buy-in from the community, we could go around and ask everybody and see how many signatures we come up with. My worry is, when they hear Brighton First, they're going to think we're looking for money, we're trying to sell candy bars. I mean, you know, the obvious assumption is going to be that this is something they don't know about, and they don't know if they want to weigh in about. And what a possibility might be to get this couple that's across the street, Stuart, and see if Stuart would run around. Stuart might have more cachet than us, and we could try that. But again, it might be that by the time that happens, we're probably looking at maybe, not this summer, but next summer.
I'd like to say something. You know, it seems like every time a group of people come into this town that wants to help out, everyone seems to say, no, no, no. Here's a group of people that's willing to come in, it's not going to cost you a dime to do anything, and you're saying, no, no, no. Now, that area sat down there 15, 20, 30, maybe 40 years or so. No one thought about doing anything with that piece of property until they decide they want to put something in there. Why is it that every time something comes into Rochester, you got to shoot them down? Or Rochester, selling Rochester out to other towns for nothing? I don't understand it. Why is it? You claim to be interested in this town, let's do something for this town. They're willing to do it on their expense, and you're telling them, no. I don't understand it.
These young kids need something to be doing.
How many kids would be in a program?
Well, I mean, looking at that lot, I think it depends on whether or not, what we're hoping is that we're going to, it's going to be a family affair. And so we might get three kids in one family, they would have a spot. We might be able to have a significant number of kids, 20, 30, 40 kids on that lot alone. And the idea is that we're going to have some type of, like, shelter on one side that abuts one of the houses for some shade and benches. So for instance, it could become a community congregation center. People could come down, look at people growing their gardens, sit down and visit, you know. It's not big enough that we could do some of the things that we suggest with the other side, because the other lots, we had room that we could put in, like a small little basketball court, have a small, remember I said a little neighborhood congregation center with tables and things like that, you know, that we could do that. That could be, that place could be the start of, you know, the other place for walks, let's say, if you want to do fundraising walks. We still could use that smaller lot. We could do that, that if an organization like the American Heart Association wants to do a heart-healthy walk all in that residential area up there, we could be the starting thing for that. They could call us and say, hey, can you open your garden? And we'd have doughnuts and coffee, and people could sign up there and get their numbers and then take the walk.
Spend money on that.
Yeah, we would, we would help. You know, because the one thing, as I told you last time in March, you know, which I know you, we don't work in silos. Everybody else in Beaver County, well, not everybody, but a lot of people in Beaver County work in silos. We try to find other organizations. We go, we start with all the churches. Do you have kids in that area of Rochester Borough who would like to be in a community garden? Do you want to come help us? Do you want to do things? And so we would partner, as Brighton First already has in Rochester, with these organizations. And we haven't even opened our doors yet.
Well, can we continue this process later? And we appreciate all the information provided.
No, no, no problem. And Mr. Barrett knows.
If I may say one thing, if, with council's permission, I understand that if they go soliciting a survey, could be problematic. Council's permission, I would have no problem going to the neighborhood. I think it'd be more receptive if this officer went through the door. I would do the survey for the group.
Oh, God bless you. God bless you, Suzanne.
But I need permission from council, the mayor, to do that without their permission, then, you know, you can't do it. But if they, if they want a survey, and that's what they want, I would be glad to do that for you.
That would be wonderful.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Does anybody else want to speak?
I want to say thank you, Keith Jackson, for speaking up on our behalf. I appreciate you and I thank you.
I'm for the people of Rochester. Regardless, you know, what people think about me, I don't care.
Thank you, that's great.
I'm for the people of Rochester. And I've been here 66 years, and I'm not changing for nobody. Accept me the way I am, or don't accept me at all. That's the way I look at it.
Well, I appreciate it because, you know what, this is actually, this could be a catalyst to show other parts of different communities in Brighton, wherever, whatever. But you know what, it takes a community to raise a kid, especially when you have someone that's down and out. So who's going to do that? You know, if you turn your backs, don't ever say anything that you're going to do something for a kid, and turn your back and not do it. Because this is, we're adults here, and you're, you know, you all have probably kids or grandkids or whatever, and, or if you don't, you probably know a kid that you have befriended and helped. So you know what, we have to reach down and pick up the kid that doesn't have anybody so he doesn't, you know, is not going to be arrested for drugs or whatever and be mentored by someone, a druggie, or whatever. So it starts here, it starts with each and every one of you, and it starts with myself as well.
And again, I want to thank you all for your time and your diligence in listening to this, and we wish you a wonderful, wonderful, holy weekend.
And I thank you guys, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to add anything? Yes, my name is Barbara.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't even know that you wanted to say, I'm sorry.
It has nothing to do with your project.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I'm for that. I live down on George Street in Rochester. Everybody knows, very small, tight street, parking on both sides of the road, very narrow, and cars, it's a busy street up and down, okay? And parking on one side, I park normal. On the other side, I'll take and I will put two wheels on the curb because all my vehicles at one point in time have been hit from cars flying up and down or whatever. You get a ticket, if I get a ticket, then everybody should get a ticket. Who parks the same way?
Did you receive a ticket or no, Jessica?
I see cars in that street parked on the sidewalk all the time, trucks. Yeah, when I...
You got buses coming up.
When I went to work this morning, there was three cars. And when I got off of work this afternoon, I went and I paid my ticket. I paid, I have no problem paying my ticket. But if I pay, then everybody who's parked like we park, they should get tickets.
Down that street, yes.
What I'm saying, when we got the ticket, you had four other cars parked on the sidewalk. Why they didn't get a ticket? Why they didn't get one?
I did call the police. I did call the police.
Oh, yeah, they got one.
I did. And Officer, Lizzie, he did come down. He said, what do you want me to do? You want me to give them tickets? I said, yes, I do.
Well, we were told that, well, who called the police? We can't tell you unless you pay the $15. So we tried to pay the $15, and they still wouldn't give us the police report.
I was told that.
They still wouldn't give it to us.
She had to look into that, but I did not get it because I would have paid the $25.
They have to know who, they have to know who called the police. We had to run it around there.
Well, thank you for listening to us.
I want to say, if they're down on that street, it's on the other street. But like, we had like five tickets. Every time I turn around, it's, we get a ticket. Why? But the ones behind us don't get no tickets.
Well, thank you for bringing this to the matter.
We know what, we know why.
Thank you.
We know why.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming and bringing it to us.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody.
Do you have any...
I do not. I just came to the meeting to see the meeting.
Well, thank you for coming.
You came to a good meeting.
Good thing I had dinner before I came in.
I wish Mr. Ringer was here. Okay. We'd like to go ahead and proceed, approve a minute, minutes of the regular meeting. The stormwater meeting's out on March 18.
I'll make a question.
Second.
Did I say motion? I have to approve anything?
A question.
Any questions? No? Okay. Items for councils, consideration and action, motion to pay all approved bills. A motion? Any questions?
I have a question.
Mrs. White has a question. She's fine.
Do we have a different cleaning service?
Yes. We have a blue water cleaning.
Okay.
Yeah, we were using boat cleaning.
Yeah, because I caught that, and there was something other mine, or, no. I'll question that a different day. Thank you.
Does anyone make the motion to pay all approved bills?
I don't know.
Mr. Howe, anyone?
I'll second it.
Mrs. White. Final draft operation and maintenance agreements for the boat clubs for councils, review and consideration. We will...
Just table that, since we're going to have another meeting.
Okay. Table meeting on April 22nd. C, a letter from the joint sewer authority solicitor requesting an easement and right of way to construct three separate sewer lines down Railroad Street and through two parcels owned by Rochester Borough. An agreement and drawings are attached for council's consideration. Does anyone have any questions?
I have reviewed those documents, and from a legal point of view, I have objections. However, it would be my recommendation that council pass a motion approving your consent to enter into that agreement, subject to the review of the engineer. You understand that the joint authority is under a very burdensome consent order. And in order to implement that consent order, they have to have some way to implement it. And this is their best combination of implementing it. You know, theoretically, you could say, well, look someplace else. I mean, I'm just speaking not legally, but I think you owe the courtesy to the joint authority to grant their wish, subject to the approval of the engineer.
I'll make the motion.
Second, Mr. Becker, seconds. Thank you. D, request for Lindsey Kiefer to purchase 411 Jackson Street from the Beaver County Repository for council's consideration. Is there any questions or concern regarding that purchase that council has?
I just question the fact that people are buying up properties for nothing. We sit here and say, yeah, it's okay, go ahead.
Well, honey, I hate to be Dorothy Fager.
I know, I know.
There is a process in place involving the county and the taxing districts when properties are generated out of the repository. And the county, and they screen these very intensely, I think, these days. And we have a commissioner here. But the county has approved it through their chief assessor, okay? And the process says, and I quote, that none of the taxing districts are to unreasonably withhold their approval. And I have a note here, since the county has approved the, the deal, so to speak, all right? I presume that's a reasonable offer from the county, okay? But I would not, if you're going to put a motion out to approve this, okay, obviously you should approve it, subject to the school district giving their approbation, because it takes two of the taxing bodies plus the county. If you look at your documentation, the chief county assessor, Kevin, has approved this on March 29th of 2019. So again, if you're going to approve it, obviously, it cannot get totally approved until the county has approved it, which it has done. You do not know whether the school district has, and then obviously, the municipality here. I don't know. I'm just trying to explain this.
And the school district's board is the mayor.
I have something to say about that. I was there, must have been this month. The sidewalk on that property, it's a shared sidewalk between 411 and the house to the right. The basement wall is collapsing on that, and the sidewalk is caving in, which is permitting, or having damage to the property on the other side. I don't know if there's anything that we can say, and if they do get that property, if that is something that they can address, like...
Let me give you an analogy. It might go a little bit, okay? This mother is very upset that her ex is not paying support, all right? She can't oppose the visitation order, all right? This transaction will probably give you an ability, because this person is interested in the property, to improve it. If the transfer occurs, and I'm saying it will, then obviously, you can cite them accordingly. But I would think if somebody's interested in the property, and they know what's going on there, that they would intend to do something about it. If not, they're buying themselves a quote-unquote semi-law suit from Rochester.
Okay.
Does that help you?
Sure.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, they got to purchase another rental property, make it into a rental property, or what?
There's been some discussion with this body before, when people are buying stuff off the repository, asking that they be present so you can ask them these types of questions of what's their intent for this property. Now, you've turned several down in the past because they didn't represent themselves before you, and you can have that opportunity to find out what their intention was for, they used to that. And though I had a note, they said they were going to be here tonight, and obviously, they aren't, so...
Well, I think that's a, you know, you can basically say that you're going to suspend or postpone any approvals, subject to them appearing here to answer your questions. I have no difficulty with that. And that's a fair response to this.
And basically, by you approving it, you're saying that we'll, we'll go ahead and absolve you from any of the past taxes and any other expenses. Well, I think in... Well, I think in fairness, you have a right to ask them what they're gonna do with it if you're gonna be willing to forego all that, so I don't think it's unreasonable.
So, if we suspend the request, do we reach out to them to see if they can get us meeting, or is that up to them?
I think John ought to send a letter to them stating that we expected you to be here, you weren't here, so therefore, we have delayed approving your request.
That was just to sell the property. That isn't about the taxes or anything like that, right? To waive the taxes, everything?
Well, that, when you give your consent, that's what you're doing. You're waiving all the...
You're waiving the prior taxes.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but from a certain point on, they have to pay. If you read your intention, it's not, you're not waiving huge your taxes.
I know that. I just, I wanna talk to them, see what it's gonna be. I don't want another report for any property.
So, we'll send a letter for them, for Lindsay Kiefer to come to council if she wants to proceed with the proposal. B, a letter from the Martin Luther King Celebration Committee requesting the use of the park next to the Dollar General store for their annual celebration event on August 12, 2019, for council's consideration. Does anyone have any questions regarding that? Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Howe? Second motion. Mr. Rutherford.
I'll make sure she's aware that we're gonna be opening bids for that park project in April. That could very well be under construction this year at that time, so I'll make her aware of that. You know, we're not gonna be doing the fountain park, they could always do across the street.
Yeah, that's an option. And the letter from the Beaver County Boom soliciting sponsors for the annual fireworks event on June 22nd, 2019, for council's consideration. I believe we did this last year.
We gave $500 last year.
Is there any questions, or do you wanna proceed?
I'll make the motion for the 500, Ken.
Second.
Mrs. White, Mr. Howe. G, the manager is presenting a proposed bench and trash receptacle to be considered as a standard for the borough to provide a consistent design element throughout the community. The cost of the bench is $1,020, the cost of the trash receptacle is $1,330. The manager is also asking to purchase two benches and a trash receptacle for Gerard Park and four additional trash receptacles for Brighton Avenue. Does anyone have any questions that they wanna discuss?
And the bench and receptacles, a little pricey, but they're good quality, the last, you want something that will stand up to the weather, stand up to some minor abuse.
I think they're sturdy.
And this would, I know Brighton Avenue, um, business owners...
We've had complaints about not having receptacles down there. My thought is, you know, if we try and buy a few, it's not something that we go out and wanna buy 15 benches and 15 receptacles, just buy a few each year and just start building up a, an inventory out there over time.
I'll make the motion since I was one who always complained. Buy the garbage.
I'll second.
Mrs. White makes the motion. Mr. Becker, seconds. Do you need us to discuss any of the colors, or is that something that...
That was out there as well. I typically would go with black, but that's why I put that color chart in there, maybe I had it real.
Black would be the receptacle.
Black works everywhere.
Park down, down the street, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. H, New Brighton Borough is selling their Bobcat Skidsteer. The manager would like to discuss the possibility of Rochester purchasing this piece of equipment. They would probably accept $13,000 or $14,000.
I mean, a Skidsteer, we don't have one currently. It's a very versatile piece of equipment. They're selling theirs and has a bucket. It does have the, um, the, no, 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 doesn't have any other attachments, but it has the hydraulics, that you can get those attachments. You can rent those very easily. We have to need a concrete breaker or a broom or any of those other types of attachments. Plus, it gives us a backup right now. We have the backhoe down there, but, you know, it's not always available and it's not always out of service or in service. So, in winter time, we're loading trucks with salt. This would be a little easier to manage with the Skidsteer as well. Like I said, it would make a lot of jobs a little easier to do. It is used as some good shape, though. Brighton uses theirs a lot, so that's why they went to just get a new one. We wouldn't be using it as far, anywhere near as much as they are, so a used one like this should last us for...
How was it?
How many miles does it have on it?
For hours.
Yeah, it was hours.
How many man hours?
Can't remember the hours, I'm sorry.
But it's in pretty good shape?
Yeah, it is.
It's in excellent shape.
I think it's... It's gotta be versatile, too, and working in the, on the alleys, fixing up the alleys and trying to grade them and pave them. This will work in the alleys where that big backhoe.
Right behind the vet, I mean, Elks.
Right.
That road there.
Oh, that's terrible.
That's a bad road there.
But that's, that's, that's excellent diesel equipment.
How much does a new one cost?
Probably 20, 25.
Nah, they're more, we talked about 40, probably around 40 or 50.
Yeah, 45,000.
Beaver uses, they have one, right?
Yeah, they have a broom attachment, clear their sidewalks in the winter.
Both sidewalks, on both sides of the main street, plus other places. New Brighton does the same thing with theirs.
Does anyone want...
It could aid in snow, if you had a lot of snow, when they were pushing snow, they could go around and...
I think you can actually buy a blade for that, too.
Probably, yeah.
Thing is, it's not real heavy, so sometimes it just, you know, it's slipping and sliding, but it can help in some areas sometimes.
Does anyone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Becker, motion, that is second.
I'll second.
Mr. Howe, seconds. Five, items for councils review and discussion. Council received for the review, the minutes of the March 14, 2019 Rochester area joint sewer authority meetings. Anything anyone wants to discuss concerning those? Okay. B, council received for the review, the meeting notes of March 11, 2019 Rochester Borough Development Corporation meeting. Anything to discuss regarding those? C, the council mayor, solicitor, police chief, code officer and manager received from the Rochester VFW Post 128, an invitation to attend the 90th anniversary event scheduled for April 27th at 6:00 PM. The post would like to pay for the board members dinners as their guest. You are free to bring a guest and the cost would be $12. Please RSVP by April 23rd as directed on the invitation. So, read the invitation, feel free to respond if you plan to attend. D, council received for the review, the March 2019 Fire Department report. Any questions or anything anyone wants to discuss? Okay. E, council received a thank you from the Rochester Vanna Basketball Program for supporting the program. Six, committee reports, public administration. Mr. Becker?
Yeah, your packet has the expense of revenue from the first of the year to April 10th. In it for your review of questions.
Any questions?
That's all I have.
Thank you. Public safety, Mr. Maple? Anything to report out on? Sorry. Anybody have anything to report out on public safety? Public works, Mr. Howe?
Excuse me, back on public safety.
Yes.
That gentleman, well, that lady who was here about their parking ticket. That street is bad. People park in that sidewalk all the time. And if one person's gonna get a ticket, they all should. Can you look into that? Okay. That wasn't, okay, thank you.
Does it need to be, like, parking on one side?
You're not allowed to park on the sidewalks.
It needs to be that way, but they'd probably squawk even louder if you did that.
Nobody's allowed to park on sidewalks.
Yeah, the road's too narrow. They really shouldn't be parking on one side.
Yeah.
We went through this a couple of years ago, and there was complaints from council that cars are parking on the sidewalk. So, we went down and we started ticketing them at the request. It's been going on for forever because it's a very tight road, but we did start ticketing. And, you know, it's unfortunate that, you know, that they got a ticket, but if they parked on the sidewalk, they, you know, we do ticket down there quite often, we do.
Is that something that we need to redo to make one, or one side? Or they're not enough parking?
It's a rerun.
Okay.
Going back the same thing years ago.
Okay.
And they decided to make it Clay Street, One Way East, Your Street, One Way West, or I don't remember which one. But one was One Way, One Way.
I was thinking One Way, I was thinking parking on one side.
It's been the last two long, everybody's screaming and hollering and everything about not being able to park anyplace near their house, and one thing and another, went back to the same thing.
Part of the problem, I live on that street, part of, people have parking in the back in the alleys, and some have garages. And either their garages are filled with clutter, or their parking spot is filled with clutter, and they wanna park in front of their house for some reason, so it gets hit, 'cause believe me, cars get hit there quite frequently.
Yeah.
So, I mean, and everybody doesn't have that ability, but there are some that would alleviate some of the problems if they would do that, but nobody wants to do that.
Okay. Mr. Howe, did you have anything for public works?
No, I'll refer to the...
Okay. Recreation, the park project rebid opening will be on April 30th.
Hopefully, we'll get some reasonable bids this time, and we can move forward with that project. We did take the fountain park out of the bid, so it's just the two, the district park and the Warham Ward.
Okay.
So, I'll let you know if...
Mayor's report?
I have, I have one thing on the recreation. Yeah, I was up at the Ballfields on Connecticut and, uh, Mr. Eddie was up there lines, he takes, him and his volunteers take care of it. It's a, they're doing an excellent job, and we were talking, and he asked if council, if we could get them some mulch for the playground up there, which we've done in the past. He said if they just dump it in piles in the playground, he'll, he'll spread it, whatever, whatever it is that we get the mulch.
Yeah, 'cause they just repainted, they sent me pictures of all the...
It really looks nice. They do a good job.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we can.
I can never brush the recreation. If we get up our big new lights, we remember we had a little bit of lights last year.
For...
Light rent.
For the office?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're up.
Yeah. Any other thing else for recreation? Mayor's report?
Yes, a lot of these alleys, they do need repair, more than just one or two of them. There's a lot of major dips, almost six to eight inches deep in them.
Yeah.
Your alley, I see people throwing grass and stuff in it, trying to build the holes up and brick and blocks and stuff. Okay, also, uh, street sweeping, the end of Oregon Avenue. The last house on Oregon Avenue was in the township, and there was two cars the other day. They got tickets from the borough for street sweeping, and they were in the township area.
We took care of those.
Okay.
New officer, we didn't know.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd love that, I knew it was a new officer, correct. That's it.
Solicitors' report?
Yeah, I would like to extend my kudos to the board for its quintessential exercise of transparency this evening. Most municipalities place limits on how long individual citizens can talk.
No longer to tap out.
And it was edifying to me that you had, and we don't have such a restriction here in Rochester, but it was edifying to me that you did listen and you disagreed, and you may have agreed, but the point is that you should be commended for giving those citizens that opportunity, 'cause a lot of municipalities have two, three, four, five minutes, and that's it. And finally, I would like to wish all of you a happy, a blessed, and certainly, an enjoyable on Easter Day.
Good officers' report? Council received for the review? Any questions or anything you wanna add?
I don't have anything to add to my report. If you guys have any questions.
The house on Reno Street, they burned out one. Is it going to be demolished soon?
Yeah, I wanna talk to her. I didn't get to talk to her this week, well, last week, in regards to if she wants to... John, we have that money, right? So, we can see...
As long as you get her consent.
But what if the bid for the demolition is more than what we have for that?
It shouldn't be, but if it's more than what we have...
How about if I get a bid first and then talk to her?
Yeah.
Okay.
You get the bid, let me know how much it is, and I'll let you know if we have enough, and then...
Now, do I have to get three bids on that?
Um, yeah.
You want, hey, give me a call more about it.
Okay.
Police chiefs' report?
Yes, in front of all the council members, you have a copy of the monthly police report for the month of March 2019. You also have a copy of the code enforcement report from March 19th, 2019, to April 15th, 2019. If you have any questions, I can answer them.
Managers and treasurers' report?
Everybody has March treasurer's report. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to, I have to answer those if I can.
Any questions?
The only one thing I wanted to add was, on June 15th, the Rochester Borough Development Corporation is trying to organize an emergency service personnel appreciation day. We're having that little car show, bike show at the old Kmart parking lot that, that, uh, rods and, I can't remember the name of that group they're doing, that benefits the veterans. That's gonna be in the parking lot. The Beaver County Tourism has paid for Froggy to do a live broadcast from Brighton Avenue that same day. So, the Development Corporation thought they would try and do this emergency service personnel appreciation day, or try and get, from the counties of Beaver County, try and get county fire departments, police departments, ambulance services to send up a vehicle or two and some representatives and have them down Brighton Avenue and try and get people to come down and thank you for their service. Gives the departments an opportunity to show some of their equipment, talk to people about what they do. So, that's what we're trying to get accomplished for June, oh, June 15th. It'll probably be from 12 noon till 2:00 PM. That's how long Froggy's gonna be down on Brighton Avenue.
What was it coming to?
12 noon to 2:00 PM. I think the car show is 12 to 5, so they'll be there a little longer.
June 15th.
That's all I have.
That sounds like a fantastic idea. Old business and any new business that you need to discuss?
Thank you.
I just have one question, once councils take on me doing the survey, I don't know if we established that or not.
That's what I wanted to say. You know, what are we going to do? Because if we don't vote yes, they're gonna take it to Manaca, they're gonna dig the new Brighton, and they're gonna scoop that up for their kids. We are going to be missing out. There's some fine lines that need to be taken care of, like a, a lease, but if we let them do it for 2000, the summer of 2019, that would be terrific, to let them have a trial run of it. And then if there's major problems, and then we don't have to do it 2020. If they could start out with something small, they have very large plans, but if they could start out with something small, I think it'd be excellent for the community. I think that every, every, in every ward, there should be a community garden. We have so many empty lots. Maybe if we give this one a trial run with their help.
The kids need something to do in this borough.
I don't have a problem with the concept. My only concern is... I don't have a problem with the concept, my only concern is, it is right in the middle of a neighborhood, you know, what their idea of fencing is, and, you know, I'm sure they're intending to use all the grass space available, if they bring that fence, by zoning, they're not allowed to bring a fence all the way out the sidewalk, along either street. I think it's a 20-foot setback, so they lose a lot of that property if they have to keep those fences back. You know, that's something, are we going to enforce on them that they're not putting a fence out, or they're not supposed to put the fence? How high is the fence gonna be, what kind of fence is it gonna be? I'm sure they're envisioning chain link fence, well, is that really appropriate in a neighborhood to have this big empty lot with a big chain link fence around it?
I think if you...
The concept, I, I like the idea, but it's just how it really plays out in that neighborhood, though, and what it ends up making the property look like, that would going to be my concern.
Well, what if you, for the sake of conversation, and at the same time being adhering to our ordinances, what if you just entered into some type of lease agreement for 2019? However, they would have to adhere to all of the zoning ordinances, and they would have to discuss with Peggy and John precisely what they want to do, and you can either approve or disapprove, does that make sense? I'm just tossing this out for discussion, but, but you can't have them construct fences, if that's the proper word, if in fact it's going to violate our ordinances, because other people will look at that, and you're, you're creating really what I would label as an illegal precedent.
Yeah, the only one that they can have is a, what was in that ordinance? I can't think of the fencing.
Split fence.
Yeah, split rail fence.
Can I address that?
Yes.
Down there on the main street, between Uncle Chuck's and JJ's, that's not considered as a split fence there, and it was a fence clipped up.
Where is that, Uncle Chuck's?
Right on Brighton Avenue, between Uncle Chuck's and JJ's bar, there was a fence that was put up, put up there, and that's not a split fence.
And that was before my time, it's been there for quite a while.
Is that the, is that the setback, 20 feet?
I think for a fence.
Yeah, and, and...
Lot taken, and they would have nothing to work with.
If it's in a, in a lot that is not a corner lot, it's different, the fence...
Across from the parking, that parking lot, across from there.
So, a corner lot, the fencing's different?
Yes, well, anything that is, it'd be considered like a front lot.
Typically, a house has one access to the street, so it's your front lot, the frontage is the 20 feet, but since she's on the corner, anything butting the street is considered front, so now it's all the way around, it has to be shrunk. But, you know, if they're agreeable to those stipulations, we just need to make sure that they know what they are and...
Is there any other lots throughout Rochester, or...
Not that we own, there's a lot of lots.
None that we own like that one.
I mean, they could go out and, they were willing to buy this one if they wanted to go out and buy one of those vacant lots that are out there, they could always do that. Again, they'd have to abide by the zoning regulations, just...
Yeah.
I'm in favor of the chief doing the survey, see what the neighbors think.
Yeah.
And I mean, just because they, they agree with it, doesn't mean we have to either, but just to see what, I know if it was coming next to my house, I would appreciate to voice my feelings on it.
But that location down there, where they're talking about, there's nobody's voices that you would, would go to to say that it's okay or not okay. It's different than being near your home or my home, that's, that's right there on the corner of what's around it, but highways and the parking lot.
No, I'm talking about the one on...
On the Reno?
On Reno and the...
Oh, okay, yeah, I can understand that.
Yeah.
I thought you was talking about the one that on the corner down there. I agree with you on that.
The one right there, where there's houses all around it.
I agree with you on that.
So, you can proceed with the survey, see, does everyone agree?
You guys are okay with it, I will do that.
You gotta tell them there's gonna be a fence around it and everything like that.
Well, I don't know too much, other than what I've just heard here, so I mean, I was basically just gonna do the tour.
I mean, if you're just gonna tell them there's gonna be a garden, everybody's gonna say, okay, garden's nice, but what about the fence? I think you should wait till you get some literature from them, then, you know, before you go approaching people, telling them this and that, not having the full story about what's going on there, you can only go with parts and bits of it, they're not gonna know exactly what you're talking about, but if you have a full draft of what you're planning on doing, and explaining it step by step, maybe people will see the picture a lot different than the way it could be explained. They were talking about putting a six-foot fence down there where the theater used to be, and gates with locks on it and everything like that, now they're talking about revillions, but the only people that's gonna be able to go in there is the people that has the flyer beds and stuff like that. So, it's what happens if there's like six families who wants to get in there, they're in there, and what happens if another family wants to get in there, they can't get in. That's the reason why I said you need to get a draft of exactly how it's gonna be going before you give a decision yes or no on something. You're gonna have to let them know about the fence too.
I'll talk, I'll talk to them.
Yeah, if somebody wants to get all the information like the mayor said, and give me that literature where I can say, so when I go house to house, this is what they want, I'll, I'll be glad to do it, I don't have no problem doing it, so...
Anyone have anything else they wanna discuss?
Does the madam commissioner have any solicitations to extend?
I do not.
First time since I've known you. We're grateful that you come.
I'm trying to make a call for municipalities and municipalities, in hopes to hear what's going on in the community.
Right.
Motion to adjourn. I'll make the motion, Mrs. White and Mr. Brothers.